Good morning. I'm going to recall this October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Hancock County Commissioner's Special Leading to Order. Gentlemen, I direct your attention to the agenda and ask if there's any adjustments.
I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of removing item two, which is the employee recognition.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other adjustments, gentlemen? Hearing them. Declare our agenda is in order. This time we'd ask if there's any public comment. Is anybody up there this morning who would like to make a public comment? Hearing them, want item three, approval of last minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the October fifth regular meeting as presented.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Morning Kitty.
Good morning. Commissioners, how are you? To start off this morning, we do have two of our nonprofit grant awards. The first, we are pleased to request from the Hancock County Commissioners their approval toward the following nonprofit organization, illicit funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program. For Buck Memorial Library in Bucksport, an amount of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and nine cents. And we have Lisa, the director here today.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge your award of an ARP revenue loss grant to Buttonmore Library in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and nine cents is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Lisa?
Yes.
You want to turn right around and stand in front of us and face the cameras?
Sure.
They can look good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't spend it all in one place. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Secondly, we are pleased to request from the Hancock County Commissioners their official approval to award the following nonprofit organization illicit funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program. The Saint Croix District of the Garden Club Federation of Maine, that's a mouthful, in the amount of five thousand six hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents. And we have Patty here to receive that award.
I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an ARP revenue loss grant, Saint Croix Garden Club Hancock District, in the amount of five thousand six hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mary is the, still, is she still the president of the garden club?
No.
No, she don't. Is she back from Canada?
Not yet.
Holy smokes. She's been stuck over there for what?
She has.
Over a year?
Yeah.
Oh, no kidding.
Relatives in Canada. We haven't been able to see them for a year either.
Wow, no kidding.
Yeah.
I just hope that situation improves.
Hopefully soon.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Still upcoming, we have one grant application that officially withdrew as of yesterday. We have one that they're still waiting on some financial documentation, and then one new one that arrived. So they're still coming in a little bit slower, but they are arriving.
And you told me the other day, November thirtieth is the deadline for submission, so we have another month.
Update on premium pay responses. Did officials receive the two that, okay, I want you to saw that. And a full list of who has responded, which I think is around six total, three, four, five, six in total responses.
How long ago did we send those out, Kitty? Remember? Has it been two weeks?
Oh, yeah. It's been way more than two weeks. I would say it was, yeah.
Gentlemen, what do we think of the rack of response? You know, we have four responses.
Two official with names told six with some sort of verbiage back.
Potentially, there's thirty-three, thirty-four communities could respond.
Well, I've been, I was contacted by some of the ones that responded. I was kind of curious what they were doing right, because it was a different tone than I got. I, I don't think that going out there again is going to do anything. I just think that there's, I don't know what to call it, friction or animosity or something that is there because of differential in funding, of which we have no control of. And I just think going back out there is just going to, you know, rub that in their face when we're obviously not doing that because we don't, you know, we're not trying to figure out who gets what or for what reason, so. That's just my two cents.
Well, the, the two representatives that were here when we interviewed this haven't even applied yet, have they?
No.
I find that curious. I always thought that had been first in mind, considering.
Right.
Well.
The deadline for this one is the twenty-ninth, I believe. So the twenty-ninth, right, that was our deadline for this, October twenty-ninth. So.
We did, we did set a deadline for this.
And I get the impression that, you know, some, it's, trying to figure out how to say this here. It, they've been talking amongst themselves through the folks that were here, so I'm like, okay. I think we should just let this slide.
Well, I guess at some point, though, we'll have to decide whether or not, what position to take or what action to take if we get just a smattering of responses. I mean, is that, is that an indication county-wide that that's unpopular? Or necessary? I'm not asking for a comment today on that, but I mean, if we don't receive substantially more, I'm just wondering if, are we going to recognize the ones that did or recognize nobody? So that'll be in discussion for another day, I guess.
Well, I'm of the opinion you should just drop it. You know, unless we're willing to fund something for everybody, I don't know how to do that.
Kitty, did you get the sense that perhaps they didn't want to spend their own ARP funds, that they had other priorities? No?
I, I'm sort of in agreement. There seems to be a lot of, maybe we deserve you guys to pay this. I don't know. I, yeah, it's been, it's been lukewarm at the very best. And it's, I also want to recognize that we also have the broadband thing going on, and I think they recognize that's a limited people money. Maybe where is it best served to spend that money? And maybe this just is not rising to the top of the pile.
Well, and I get, I get their point, you know, and not by our actions. They got relatively small amounts of money. And, you know, unless we're willing to significantly fund this, I don't, I think we'd be doing a disservice at that point because some of these other items that, that really can have impact, county-wide. So that's why I'm an advocate. We try this, let's move on.
Well, and the criteria is pretty specific. You can't just allocate twenty-five thousand to each town and say, go spend it, right? So it has to be four specific things, and that just falls in that criteria.
Yeah.
So.
We could not, we could not do a lot of cash. We couldn't do that.
Has to be earmarked for one of this specific criteria, right?
Remember, we thought maybe just give them five point three million dollars, as I said, equal their share. We don't, can't do that.
No, no, that was not the plan. The plan was to track it that way, but it would still fall under. We would just give them the money. We would hold the money. They would have to prove it. Yeah. But, yeah.
I mean, that's another tag, but, you know, when we're dealing with a specific, I don't know. I'm not at the deadline yet, so.
Gentlemen, that's true. And I got to tell you, though, in defense of that, there was so much in there that we didn't really understand what we could spend it for, but this was truly one of them that we, it was undisputed, so. Just like the, I don't know, just like the nonprofits. I mean, let's get some money out there now and let them know that we're interested in sharing it with them, so. Well, we'll let them decide to our extent. They want to get involved, we'll.
I do think this is going to come up sooner rather than later as we approach broadband because we have towns who are going to say, I want forty thousand dollars. And so at some point, there has to be an allocation, right? How are you going to allocate? Who are, you know, I think that's going to come up soon.
All right, so we'll have it on the November second, on November, is it November second?
Yeah, sounds ready.
That's what I should, eh?
Well, that's why I was.
Anyway, so the next regular meeting, let's have it on for discussion and possible action.
Okay. Another update is we do have a broadband meeting scheduled for next Monday night, the twenty-fifth, from five to six, and that, again, will go out to all the municipalities for them to sort of hear what our plan is to introduce our new consultant, and then to start to get some feedback from them as well to make sure that they are receiving the message that we are out there as a resource.
We have that meeting here?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it's awesome. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and we haven't sent out anything since yet with reorganization. I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of people asking, a lot of questions and asking for it, and just saying, I said, hey, spread the word. The Zoom link will be on the website, right? That'll be the same link?
Um, it can be. That isn't, it can be if you want it to be.
I think that would be the easiest at this point because it's kind of where I've directed everybody else.
Okay. So don't send out that link, I said.
Do not send out the link, you can.
Got it. So there won't be a link to send out. They'll have, they'll be directed to the website.
Okay, so all my message sent is going to be, please visit the website for the link.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then finally, I'll let John take over, but I have introduced him to two municipalities who've indicated that they are ready to go as far as broadband, so he has started those conversations. I assume that that's going to get a lot busier as of next week after this. That's everything I have.
Morning, John.
Morning. How are you, gentlemen?
Good, good. Glad you could make it with us this morning. We're glad you could make it here this morning.
Yeah, so I think we did.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you have a copy of the agreement, Commissioner Perry, and that is supposed to be county, and I think Rebecca changed that, so unless there are any other issues about that, that's ready for approval and signature.
Okay, and, and we have that somewhere that says county. Okay, so.
Up here, yeah.
The one would be signed as county.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so. I'm going to move to approve the mission broadband proposal agreement as recommended and authorize the chair to sign those documents.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? So, what? So, John, what's the difference between the agreement and the contract and the proposal?
Yeah, so the agreement is our overall action agreement, you know, covered by, and then as we do work, the proposal is under it. So this is like, oh, the first proposal, and it's other things that go on beyond here. We don't have to re-sign agreements. We just do proposals and that, just they all defer back to me.
And so like the AI process that we used to. Okay.
Gentlemen, any further discussion on motion? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have that original up here as it stands. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get it someplace. Thank you. John, go ahead. Just updating on where we have it.
Okay, so Kitty's going to start off. Meet with the towns next Monday night. Introduce the bands to their countryside in a small region. We have Kitty's reached out to a couple that's already contacted, and so they're starting most conversations. Couple of, we're already been working with elsewhere, so we know about it anyway as well. And I think that, like Kitty said, we're going to be, we're just going to be, I'll say Scott, Kitty, myself, but that whole, you know, what's the value? What's the funding going to be and the mechanism for that funding? Because obviously going to be a piece of it. You know, out of, out of our role, just to understand, okay, is it a viable broadband solution? What are we spending the money on? Part of our conversation I have with Scott is, you know, how do we, how do we determine, you know, the value of what you're asking? So part of that, our work is to, as you started, we have a mapping, you know, surveying, really understanding what's out there currently. So we get understanding of the broad, you know, the landscape of all the broadband, and then get a good understanding of, okay, you know, what do we want to put out there for? Oh, guidelines, I'll call it at this point, because we're in the process of understanding what's out there right now. You know, guidelines, so as people respond to, hey, you know, we've already got this going. You know, we know of one, two, three, four, you know, different groups, a couple of towns, some groups, some individual towns that are doing something. But we don't know after Monday night. We may try and want to say, oh, yeah, we've already been down this road, you know, X, X so far, and this is what we need, so. And I think anything that we do also, we need to keep in mind of the, you know, connect lane authority because that's also, you know, funding that's available, and so we can do some research on, you know, this funding and can it be used as a match for other funding and the other federal programs that are coming in? So I think we just, you know, again, we want to take it step by step. We don't want to rush into it too much, but there are certainly towns that are teeing up now and say, hey, go party about.
Go ahead.
And you, so you've heard from a significant number of towns?
What we know that is for specific projects that we know of, you know, especially broadband that's going on right now.
Because I know there's, you know, like on the island, I know there's, there's, our, our, as, you know, I'm not exactly sure what they're doing. And I think it's Tremont, maybe? There, there's a couple of towns that are working on things.
Come on.
Um, yeah, I, I just, I guess I'll just summarize because as you pointed out, you were indicating, we need to meet, but really, this is a great opportunity. If we could, if we could take a couple of minutes to get their input because your input directs how, how we chat. I think the basic question is, is that we have a town that's ready to go. What's the next step? So, and for me, well, to get to that ready to go, I think, for me, it's using John's expertise to say, okay, so the mapping's done. It looks right to me. They're all set. They've done this, 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 all the checkboxes, yeah. There, this is the right way to go, and they're ready for investment. So then the question is, for me, I think the process would be, okay, let's communicate to that town, and this is where you weigh in. Do then we put together a proposal from the town, bring the town in to talk, mission, to kind of have an idea as to how much that you're going to fund that? And do you take it on a case-by-case basis? Are you looking at, again, we talked about the allocation of funding, meaning to try and keep everything as, as equal as we possibly can?
Well, there, that, and then the other consideration is there, I mean, we wouldn't want to fund something that's fundable through ConnectMe or some other source, right? That's where you're talking about, we shouldn't rush into things.
Uh, potentially. I mean, a lot of these will be, they're going to be multiple funding sources. Projects are large enough that, you know, one funding source isn't.
Well, sometimes we get just a tad ahead of ourselves. I mean, we really need to be educated, maybe, perhaps a little better because philosophy-wise, are we, should we be focusing on, on dedicating a substantial amount of funds to a regional broadband project as opposed to smaller funds individually on, on, you know, towns that are connected or no continuation there, some towns? I mean, that's a, that's a philosophy question that I have. What's, what's our best impact? Is, is, can we impact better with our funds on a regional basis if we can get? Or, or should, should we, as Scott said, simply let them come to us individually? Decide we'll give them some, some funds and just peacefully.
That's sort of why we have, so.
Well, and I think that's, I'll, I'll just, you gave me the best answer was, you know, was that that depends on the situation or the scenario with the group. You know, and, and I think maybe that's why you're hesitating because you may have groups that appear to be ready and active, and that's where we are going to rely upon him because he's going to go, uh, they're not as ready as you think, guys, because that's where we really need you.
Yeah, but that's, that's the evaluation we'd make on any request for assistance. I mean, we want to evaluate and know that they were, they were ready, but still, that doesn't address the issue of taking small amounts of money and, you know, and shock approach to the county as opposed to a regional area and.
So I have, I have just an opinion on that. The thought process is, again, if we allocate this out, and this is not me, this is, you know, this is, this is a workable document. For me, what I would do as commissioners is I would recommend taking a look at, if you have all these towns, take that total. Take that total that's allocated by the former to this, to this region, and communicate with them as well. That might be something that else that they have to agree upon is that they agree to use seventy-five percent of that amount in total. They agree to use, you know, all of it, fifty percent, which means they have to then pony up their part. Because, because that's the other part of the thing for you is to decide how much, and like, again, I think it's a case-by-case scenario, how much that the municipality has for buying on this.
Hey, from a regional approach, sound good, right? You know, you could say, okay, as a county, I'm going to be the entity leading the charge, and we're just going to solve broadband. I don't know, you know, how that would look, you know, structured governance, and somebody, how the county looks at governance, how towns look at governance. You know, who's going to sign what contract with what vendors to do what work? Will that, you know, ideally, would it solve it if you could just say, okay, you know what? Well, example, build broadband as a county to everybody, period, right? Don't care who it is, and find a vendor who can do that. But it's not that clean. It's not going to be that clean. There's some different pockets. You know, there's probably some good vendors already in place that can take care of some stuff, but they need some, you know.
But see, this, this, yeah, that's the politics that, that I'm concerned about. For example, uh, giving broadband to an area of the county that has none now, as opposed to bringing the broadband, the level of, of quality in broadband, like in City of Ellsworth, up to a certain level for everybody. So, I mean, for me, I, I'm not sure how to, how to evaluate that. What's, what's?
Yeah, I think as we go through this process, it's going to be those pieces, right? The way we look at it is, you know, number one, is it even available, right? And if it's available, is it adequate? Like, is it served, run, served? We're going to talk about those definitions changing as we speak, and that is important. Right? So that's really, those are the three things to try and solve. It's, you know, as a, any broadband project, it's those, those kind of, those three pillars of saying, how do we get this? It could be available to people, and you can see this on, you're starting to do speed test maps, if you look at those. You can see that, oh, yeah, people are subscribing in this area, you know, and it seems like they have very good broadband. But then you have this lock that doesn't, and it's affordability usually, right? It's not, it's not available, it's a gamble. And it's not adequate, so.
Well, and really, we won't know that until we get down the road.
Oh, we, you got to waste it.
Yes.
Yeah. But you do have, and I think John's alluded to, you do have, we do have some communities that are ready.
That are ready to go.
So for instance, town X has, basically, is ready to go. Is working with one of the three individuals. That's how we got referred to. And the only thing I don't have is a number as to what is going to cost to finish it. But I believe you, you've looked at it already, kind of overview or alone?
That, no, no, not really. Just a quick email, that was it.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Probably more, even more down the Bluedough Peninsula?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that may be one of those where that, you know, John had discussed where that brings into you, and, and again, I think that goes to, once we hit that point. So maybe that's another conversation that we have, once we, once, once the three of us talk. I mean, that's the game plan, I know. But then you also have town, another town down on the island, who I just found out recently is basically, they're finishing, they're, they're already done. Within the next couple of months, they're, they're, they've already gone through and they've done it. So they're going to have full coverage. So each, each area, each town, and I, I've heard very little from the island, Commissioner Perry, but Bluedough Peninsula has certainly been very vocal and concerned and organized. So, you know, it's encouraging that a lot of these people are, but then we also have towns that, as you said, the underserved, Mr. Clark, that have basically done very little of anything, and they're going to need our help.
And that's the problem, because it touches at my heartstrings when I hear a principal in northern main town tell me that forty percent of the students didn't have any instruction at all during the shutdown because they didn't have access.
Right.
And I say, and, and those towns have no process, no planning process in place, don't know where to start, don't have the resources, and.
Yeah, and, and we have some of those in Hancock County.
Yeah, and that's what you play.
This is Hancock County. Sometimes this principal was in, no, that guy in Hancock County.
Okay. That's where the commission plays a substantial role in providing these, these resources, because they're going to need that help. We don't have enough money to get them to where they need to be. We already know that. But we know there's more money to get, and this guy here, that's one of the duties we're hired him for. And doing all the initial steps is to go after that money to help bring them up to speed. Yeah.
Identify those particular areas, you know, that you know clearly marked, unserved, and, you know, we're ready for, they're good for grant money from a state benefit. Right? So how can this money help, you know, through that process, prepare them for what we call being grant ready or shovel ready? So they get a project done.
So are we, we're expecting you to assist these towns that have no resources and no consultant? I mean, that's, that's beyond your, it's beyond this scope. Nothing says you can't direct some resources.
We will. There is a, there's a fine line that we will want to cross, right? That says, because we have worked with a couple of towns, and so like, say, another town comes in, we're consultants for these towns already, right? Another town comes in and says, hey, you know what? I need a consultant to do this amount of work. But we can't cross the line that says, like, well, Scott, say, hey, they got a good project, why don't you fund it? And then it's basically finding us, right? So we have to have those conversations and say,
Right.
You know, it needs to, it needs to go through the regular process.
Yeah.
We're going to do that. We're not happy to help, but I, you know, we cannot, I think we do anything that's crossing.
Yeah, we're way too early. We're, you know, that's how we're going to identify those.
That's going to happen fast. I think Kitty is, and it's, it's, once it starts rolling.
Yeah, next Monday.
Because a lot of towns, just when I'm here, a lot of towns are, are emailing me, calling me, asking me, they're considering doing the preliminary surveys that we brought in John to do. So I recommend it. Well, I, I don't want to tell you what to do, but we're having this meeting. Here's my, because I'm not sure, not knowing the industry language, I'm not sure if they're telling me exactly what I'm hearing, but I said, this is what the county's doing, and we're going to have this, we need to have these meetings, and, and that's why we got this one going. So we can introduce, yeah. Like, Derlin sent me one. I said, we're thinking of bringing in a consultant to do the mapping. We're having a meeting Monday night. He wanted us to come to the LOT the next day, but we're having a meeting Monday night. And I think that's really our goal right now is to communicate to them that we, the county, the county commissioners have stepped up, and they're going to appropriately use these, these monies for the right reason. And that they've done due diligence and hired a consultant, and, and then the consultant specifically for broadband. So you, you're marking off that check, those check marks to success right there, and that's, now we need to get them in that conversation to say, what can we, how can we help you? And as John pointed out, I don't think the game plan for us is to tell them what to do. But if they're coming looking for money, I think you have due diligence again to kind of make sure everything's, and this is where we're really going to rely on, yeah.
And we had the, we certainly haven't taken any action as to how much should we dedicate to broadband, have we?
Not officially, no.
No. Have we talked about a round number? Have we, we've said at least half the money? No, have we talked about a, a round number? Have we, we've said at least half the money, half the money on broadband? Well, we, we, it's a general idea.
I, I, I don't think we were kind of thinking this would not take off as fast and, but I, but yeah, we were kind of thinking the second allotment, but if we had to use part of the first, you know, it's pretty flexible, but yeah.
I'm a fan of just general.
Right, yeah, nothing specific was, no.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that it is taking off faster because I saw this would be, it'd be pushing the deadline before we can get, you know, so I went to his.
Yeah, one of the issues we may run into is, we all know is, I mean, when it gets down to it, our supplies or, or good vendors. I mean, but that's another discussion.
Yeah.
You know, that might put a real quick stop to this when everybody's trying to do the same work at the same time. Yeah, across, exactly, yeah.
Cool.
Why change?
Yep.
I think it's encouraging that the towns, you know, the towns that have been working on it. So I mean, I'm, I'm off for the meeting when everything checks off to seem appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, appropriate plan on their part. I don't think we should be the people in their way from stopping it happening. We should be the ones enabling it. I think by hiring the consultant, that's what we're going to do, so.
That's certainly what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Is it pretty true to, to ask, to expect some kind of an update on the November second meeting as a result of the meeting you have on the twenty-fifth?
No, yeah, yeah, it comes off as you want, may not be great, you know, may not be information, full of information, but yeah, we can give you a constant update.
Cause he misses by so, that, I mean, just your take on it, we're having a meeting Monday night.
You're going to have some sense of, of, after the twenty-fifth, of what's, what's going on out there. So I mean, just, you know, just your general consensus.
Yeah, that will be here at that meeting and that follow up on that. Absolutely.
I hope that's the, it would be nice. Very good. Anything, anything else, John?
I, um, I don't think so. The project is taking off.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Hang on now, right?
That's right.
Thanks, John.
Did your, did your motion just cover the first part or do we still, did the motion cover the proposal too?
Yeah, I said agree with you.
Okay, that's fine. You voted on that?
Yeah, yes.
On the goal set, that's right.
Yeah, it was proposal, I didn't. Hi Kitty.
Thanks, thanks Kitty, thanks John.
We'll now move to the airport. Leroy, good morning.
Good morning. Um, so I got the, uh, request for the approval of the agreement with, um, Black Bear Management. Uh, in the Butler Foundation to advertise the family funding Maine charitable foundation on the North Wall of the arrivals Hall. Um, they approached me, wanted to know if they could put a and basically an advertisement. It's a big, um, photo of their area down. It's down in the little back area. And, you know, it brings in a little bit of revenue.
So I'm going to move to, move as requested, recommend, as requested, recommend and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing them all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
And the other item is, is, uh, we've been working on with, uh, Climate to Thrive, uh, to put our toes in the water to see if we can get any solar here on the field. Um, it looks like it could possibly move forward. So I've got, uh, Beth from, uh, is on the line here with us and she's got a small presentation. She's who I've been working with at a climate to thrive, so. Um, she's having a little trouble sharing her screen, so, um, it may be, uh, um, Rebecca says you have the presentation anyway, so, um. So it, it's been a project that we've been actually dabbling with now for probably eight or nine months or more. It looks like it, uh, might actually work, so. I don't know, if she could, um, pop on and, uh, give us her presentation, that would be great. Barring, if you, if you guys are okay with it.
Yes, good morning, Beth.
Hi, good morning. Um, thank you for having me here today. Do you all have a copy of the presentation in front of you?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, um, I apologize that I'm having some technical difficulties. Um, anyway, so, uh, as Leroy said, I work for a climate to thrive and we're an M D I based nonprofit that's focused on energy independence. Um, and as he said, over the last couple of months, that we've been working together to determine whether or not the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport has, um, the capacity to host solar. And right now our preliminary answer is yes. Um, over this presentation, I want to walk you through why it's economically advantageous for the airport to pursue a solar development. And I also want to introduce you to other Maine airports that are developing solar projects and, um, finally describe our findings about, um, Hancock County Airport. Um, and what the possible next steps might be. So, beginning with the financial benefits, um, the landscape of solar in Maine has significantly changed since June of twenty nineteen. Before the recent net energy metering, uh, legislation, airport projects were mostly developed as clean, reliable sources of energy that increase resilience during times of power uncertainty and reduce the facility's carbon footprint. Now, developing solar has all the same benefits, but, um, while also creating a substantial source of revenue generation. Um, depending on the financial path the airport chooses to pursue, there are multiple sources of income that the solar array can provide. Typically, an airport will go through a pre-development and site analysis, um, and then put out an R F P uh, to solar developers who will then bid on the project. And the selected developer and the airport will then structure a lease agreement, uh, that suits both of their specific goals. Um, the lower the lease agreement, the higher the electricity discount, um, provided by the developer. And no matter how it's structured, the airport will be receiving income from the lease and a discount on their electricity. Um, since the land at the airport belongs to the county, other Hancock County entities can also receive the agreed upon discount, uh, for the electricity. So it can, it's not just advantageous for the airport, it's, uh, it could be advantageous for the entire county. Um, another financial pathway, um, is what Knox County Airport decided to do. Uh, they decided to invest their own money, uh, through a grant that they received. Um, and, uh, they are funding the construction of the airport array and will own it themselves. And so they'll be receiving one hundred percent of the energy, um, over the lifetime of the array. Um, the path I see, uh, Bar Harbor Airport taking, um, if they, if you choose to pursue it, um, is more similar to Wiscasset. Um, the Wiscasset Airport is moving forward with a third party lease agreement, which is what I described earlier. Um, they are leasing twenty acres of land for a five megawatt array and the lease income agreement, the lease will produce, um, fifty-three thousand annually and over a million dollars during the twenty year lease agreement. Um, so, and they also haven't disclosed what discount, uh, they're receiving their electricity at. Um, other airports in Maine, uh, that are pursuing solar, uh, is Stanford Airport. They're, um, currently developing a fifty megawatt array, which is, uh, utility scale. It's very, very large. Um, and they are currently the largest airport, uh, array in the country. Um, as I previously mentioned, the Knox County Airport is developing a five megawatt array over thirty acres. And the Old Town Airport has leased their land, uh, to St. Carfa to construct a five megawatt array over thirty-two acres. Um, so, beginning, well, Leroy reached out, uh, probably about a year ago, um, to discuss the possibility of solar on the Bar Harbor Airport. Um, but, uh, after looking at an initial site, it didn't seem as though it was feasible. So, uh, then beginning in May, uh, Leroy and I started looking at other areas of the airport that could potentially work for solar. Um, after feedback from the airport engineers, it looks like the section of land between the, uh, runway and the bay is the most, um, uh, compatible with solar development. Um, it, besides two small wetland areas, so it would be in the lower portion of, of the, uh, wooded area in between, um, the runway and the uh, bay. So in July, I submitted a pre-application to Versant to learn whether or not the line running down route one has the capacity to interconnect with solar. That's a big barrier that a lot of solar developers come up against, whether or not, um, the lines even have capacity. There could be great land, but, um, if they can't interconnect with the grid, it's, uh, kind of dead in the water. And we learned that, uh, Versant can connect about one point six megawatts of P V. So it would be much smaller than the other, uh, developments, um, like in, um, up north in Old Town or, uh, at Knox County. Um, however, the, uh, legislator has just shifted their incentives. Um, and now, uh, developments between one and two megawatts are the most desirable for developers because of, um, the way, uh, the legislation is, uh, structured. Um, so if the array is developed, it would consist of about thirty-eight hundred panels and have a two hundred and fifty foot setback from the bay and a five hundred foot setback from the runway. Though a glare analysis would be conducted. Solar panels are designed to absorb sunlight, so from the sky, they appear like a body of water and do not impose a risk to pilots. That's why we're seeing, um, large, uh, solar developments right next to, um, right next to, uh, airports. Um, so if the, our next steps, if the commissioners approve, um, would be further environmental and engineering evaluations, including a glare analysis. Um, this would be followed by a release, uh, uh, releasing the land from the F A A for non-aeronautical use. Um, after releasing the land and gathering further site evaluations, the airport would release an R F P and go through the process of develop, of selecting a developer. And, um, during this process, the Hancock County Commission, um, sorry, the Hancock County entities could um, compile information about their electrical use in order to inform the lease agreement and become potential off takers, uh, for discounted electricity. Um, that's about all I have for you today and, uh, I'm thankful, thankful for your time and happy to answer any questions, uh, you might have at this stage.
All. So, when, when you're talking about the, I'm looking at the, I don't know which slide this is, but where I think you talked about, when you say the runway, you mean not the main runway, but runway three, five, uh, on, on the right there, right? That's the slide that you should be looking at. Okay, uh, and you said that could be, uh, I would think that that would be a major challenge to hook to the grid just because of the location, you, you. I mean, it certainly has to be underground and it certainly has to cross, uh, you know, one runway and some roads. So is, have, have you thought about, I mean, is that doable?
Yeah, and that's another, uh, thing that we would want to come to with an engineer, but yes, they can bury the lines and, uh, we have found the point of common coupling uh, with the grid, uh, would be a pole near the, um, the Hinkley's yacht, uh, uh, building. Um, and depending on the engineer's analysis, uh, Leroy and I were thinking that the lines could be buried and run kind of along the bay, along the shore and actually avoid the, uh, the runway altogether.
Yeah, that, that was my question. I didn't know if it could go around sort of the back of the hangars.
Yeah, and, and we'll need, uh, we'll need an engineer, uh, and an engineering analysis, uh, to confirm, to confirm that.
And, and Leroy, just thinking about the future of the airport, is that, would you be, I mean, you're, you're not land rich here for, for, for future development hangars or whatever. Are you giving up developable land or I, I just haven't been to that part of the airport?
I don't think so, because I think your, your analysis is kind of correct that is, there is an issue getting to it. Um, so to put that land out for, let's say, hangars or something to that line, um, there is access issues.
Because of the way it falls?
Yeah, I've been getting around the end of that runway. Um, you know, so once you're within so many feet of the runway, now you're in the safety areas and everything else. So once, you know, once, while they're working, there would be, you know, there would be some transportation back and forth issues. Uh, but once everything is up and running, I, I don't see where people would have to be over there very often. Um, the other thing, the other upside a little bit to this is, is if we could, you know, they've obviously got to get transportation over there. And one of the things the F A A likes to see is, uh, roads around the perimeter of the airport to do defense line inspections and that kind of, those kind of things. We're, we're kind of wondering maybe if we could get the developer to put in a section of road right through there and that kind of kit helps them out. And then at the end, it gives us access, you know, a little bit of road to, uh, to do the inspections where we're doing them, you know, we're obviously doing them with the U T V now, but there are some places that we actually can't get to. But, you know, the, the airport layout plan actually shows road, a perimeter road all the way around the airport.
And then?
It may be an extra plus there, I'm not sure.
Plus this question to you, uh, I'm a little familiar with, with commercial, you know, for-profit entities and some of their, you know, some of the ways they get paybacks through, you know, tax incentives and grant possibilities and that kind of thing. But since, you know, depreciation really doesn't help, depreciation and, uh, and tax credits really doesn't benefit a county. Is this realistic? Is the payback within, within reason? Because my experience is that you have to, you know, and, and this is a few years old, you have to involve, you know, a for-profit entity or, or it just doesn't pencil out.
Right, and so, um, that would be the lease agreement that's structured. So the airport wouldn't be responsible for actually constructing the array. They'd lease out, uh, the land to the third party developer who would then incur all of the development costs. And, um, I mentioned earlier in twenty nineteen, the new net metering laws. And so that allows the developer to actually sell the power to, uh, customers. And so the, the way the lease would be structured is, um, depending on how uh, expensive or cheap, uh, the airport decides to lease the land for, uh, will also influence, uh, what discount they, um, are able to purchase the electricity. And so it's beneficial, it's very lucrative for the developer and it also brings in a substantial source of income, uh, for the airport.
Well, and, you know, I guess the, the question is what's substantial, right? Uh, the, you said, I think you said that Wiscasset gets about fifty thousand, fifty-six thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, annually.
Okay, so, and, and this is, uh, this is, you know, seven, you say is seven to sixteen acres depending on technology and slope. And it's, you know, I, I guess a developer looks at the cost per megawatt, right? So for, and now with Wiscasset is, is five. So that's basically ten thousand dollars a megawatt, right? Uh, you know, from the map I've seen. So here, you know, we'd be looking at about ten to fifteen thousand, uh, which to me is not significant and, and, you know, does it still pencil out for the counties? What I'm, is the question.
Well, Beth, uh, is the, is the campus, the county courthouse campus qualified for discounts in their electrical rates? Or is it going to be contiguous to the airport?
It doesn't have to be contiguous to the airport, um, as long as it's a Hancock County entity. Um, it can be, uh, written into the lease agreement.
Typically, what, is there a percentage of savings in our electrical?
Yeah, and it's, again, it's dependent on the lease agreement. So, um, some, some airports, uh, will lease it, their land incredibly cheaply and get a huge discount like twenty-five percent. Others will, um, others will get a, a, a better, uh, income on the lease, but get closer to ten or fifteen percent off their electricity.
Uh, so you'd have to add that savings in your electricity to the, whatever, whatever do you generate.
But remember that, that the savings is only on what's available.
What do you mean?
Well, this is only a hundred, one point five, one point six megawatts. So we don't get, we'd only get a savings on one point six megawatts, not on a total bill.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't, we wouldn't use one point six megawatts on a county campus.
Well, I highly doubt that you're using over one point six, yeah.
Discount for that.
Well, it depends on our usage is.
Yeah, I mean, we're not using one point six, so. When we talk about, um, needing engineers, are we saying that, uh, like Jacobs should be involved?
When we talk about needing engineers, are we saying that, like Jacobs should be involved?
Yeah, Jacobs, Jacobs would be involved, because you know, anything that happens here, I gotta, you know, I gotta defer to them because they, they're really the, the experts in that, that field of making sure our airport is, you know, not compromised.
But the engineers that Beth was talking about are the solar engineers, not Jacobs, right?
Right, right.
Two different, two different sets of engineers.
Yeah.
Beth, any idea what the cost of the development would be? In other words, is, is it out of the question that the county might want to consider financing the, the construction themselves rather than going through a third-party vendor?
Oh, it's always more economical to fund the project themselves, yourself. So it would cost about $2 per kilowatt to construct. That's the, that's the industry kind of standard for, for an array. I think that's how, how much Knox is spending on their, on their array, maybe slightly more. I think they're building a five-megawatt array for just over $10 million. And so 1.6-megawatt array would probably be about a little over $3 million, like 32, yeah.
But isn't there, isn't there funding, though? Federal or state funding for development?
I need to look into, to that.
The reason that so many vendors were involved, that there was, there was state funding or something to assist in developing.
Well, there's tax credits, which we were not qualified for.
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, so there, there are tax credits. And, but because the commission is a, or the Hancock County is, is part of the government, it wouldn't qualify for those tax credits. And so that's why the, this lease agreement structure has been set up so that the developers can benefit from that tax credit. But the developments can still move forward. Even without the tax credits, it, it's more, the county would build more equity if they, if they owned the array themselves.
My question, I guess, is these other airports, they're all, they, they're not getting any tax credits because they're municipally owned, whether it be city or town, correct?
That is correct. Yep. So Knox County, I think, is the only airport that is building their own array. Everyone else has leased land to a third-party developer.
So that they can take care of the, they can take advantage of that spread. I know as a commercial user, I, I have a small array. And without the tax credit and without the grant, it just didn't pencil out.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. I will say that the cost of developing solar has come down substantially in the last couple of years. And so if you built your array like three, three, four, or five years ago, it absolutely would have been economically infuseable without that tax credit. Now it is still, because the cost of solar has come down so much, now it is still more advantageous to own the array yourself, with or without the tax credits, yeah.
Ours is a year and a half, so.
Oh, really?
Little less than two, but without those two, you know, incentives, it, it just didn't make sense.
Leroy, Leroy, who could see this? Can, you can't see it from the highway or from the airport because it's on that slope, but.
Right, there'd be, there would be the people in Lemoine. And one of the options, one of the options was maybe we go, set back 300 feet versus the 250 feet to give a little more. So yeah, it's going to be people in Lemoine that will see it.
Oh, really? Where it is, they're not really looking.
Right.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, one thing about it, it's just habitat to the deer, so you cut the.
Yeah, yeah. Deer and coyotes, yeah.
Coyotes. They paid that? Now, this is Scott, it's county administrator. We talked earlier. I believe you mentioned there's a, there's an opportunity for a buyout at the end of this lease?
Oh, yes, so.
Ownership, so.
So after 20 years or 25 years, depending on the lease agreement, usually what's written in is the option to, to purchase. And usually, because the cost of decommissioning the project would be more than, than, it would be more costly to the developer to do that than it would be to simply give the array away. Usually the, usually the developer will sell the, the array for like a dollar or something, essentially giving the airport the array for free after the end of the lease agreement.
That's just a simple figuring out the present value of the lease.
Future ownership is what you're looking for. Options here, Steve.
Is releasing the land from the FAA, what's that process like? How, how easy is that?
Well, I'm trying to do that now for a piece for somebody who wants to lease it down by the seaplane ramp. So I've been working on this off and on for a few months now. They want to go right back to the original deeds from when the land was bought from the owners. So I'm struggling actually finding this parcel of land. I think actually the solar array parcel is a little easier. I think I got that one figured out. But the one I'm working on over by the seaplane ramp is, is not so easy. And because it, it doesn't seem like, I think, once we get through the first one, we'll have a better feel for it. It's just filling in some of the, the blanks. And again, this deed, the deed has really been the, the struggle, stumbling block for me on this one. Because it, the parcel of land looks like it's outside of the original, several parcels of land that were bought for the airport. It looks like there was two gentlemen in Bar Harbor that were buying up the land for the town of Bar Harbor back then to make, then turning it over. So there's all kinds of weird little stumbling blocks there, but.
Obviously, we're not the first here.
No, 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 no. So it's, you know, it, it looks like it's not a, a terrible project to, to release it. It's just a little bit time-consuming, that's all. With, you know, with a little bit of funding, because we're trying, been trying to do this parcel with a little, as little outlay as I can. So, you know, if we get to the solar project, it might be a little more difficult, but.
So what is the next steps, Leroy? What do you have to mention today?
I, I guess the, the, the meaning of today was just to really bring you up to speed on where we're, what we're thinking. And, you know, should we, should we continue on down this road? Or should we just, you know, shell of it for a while? You know, I, I think it's a little bit of income there for the airport. I have to admit, my concern is, you know, if we get a developer in there and they get it half-done and, you know, they go out of business, you know, now we're out. And that, that's my biggest, I guess that's my biggest worry in this thing.
Why do you see, why do you see that what's happened, Leroy?
I don't, you know, it's the, the, I, I talked to the guys in Eastport. They, they was working on it down in Eastport. They, they started down this road with one developer and they got, you know, a ways down it and then the developer pulled out of the deal. They're, they're working with another developer, I think, to, to do that, you know? I guess it's, it's just my, my nature to be a little bit skittish on, on something like this, maybe, maybe I shouldn't be.
All the developments you have more projects, I mean, that's, that's concerned very one of them. But I, we have a, we have a contractual agreement, the obligation, correct? There's a little, there's no liability to the county for the cost, correct?
Correct, that, yeah, yes, that is correct.
I don't, I, I wouldn't be that concerned.
Well, we don't know until we see.
Well, I, I see no reason to put this on pause. We're not committing ourselves anything today except your time and, and climate to thrive's time and efforts.
Right.
I, I'm fully supportive of this. I just want to make sure that we're not giving up developable land. Because I, you know, I, I, we are short of developable land there, you know, for, for airport infrastructure, you know, like hangars and that kind of thing. But, you know, maybe there's, I, I think there's a need for that, but whether this parcel is conducive to that, I don't think so. But, you know, we don't know that till, till Jacobs gets involved, right?
Right, right. And, and I think, you know, I mean, we can, we can look at this maybe another, a little bit of another way. If, and, and again, you know, again, my concern is, is that the runway three, five safety area on the end and getting around the end. So, you know, one question could prop up. And, you know, this, this could, could go down the road in several different directions because, you know, the FAA has already told us when 1735 requires reconstruction, that they're not going to fund it. So, you know, we, we could go down this a little further if we can get these, let's say we get the developer to build us a road. Now we have access to that parcel of land, maybe next to the array to set up, you know, a few hangars. Now we have a road around there that, you know, we didn't have to pay for. Just, you know, it's just, just a thought, you know? It's like, I'm thinking a little outside the box and in the box here and trying to keep us.
We have a deliberation. Is there anything else that you need today? By general consensus, Leroy, I would say that the board, the commissioners is prepared to let you continue on, keep us advised and, and updated, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Beth, thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Just trying to draw on that, direct your attention to deliberation on a matter of Adam Woodrow versus the town of Dedham abatement appeal. Having taken testimony on October 5th, we're deliberating today in hopes of rendering a decision on whether or not to grant Mr. Woodrow abatement. So if it's okay with you, I will start this morning on the discussion. And the applicant at this hearing testified that his primary contest to the assessment on his Bald Mountain property centers around the base site assessment. Now, in 2016, that reevaluation for the town of Dedham, the base site assessments were set at 20,000 for property with little or no view, 40,000 for those with a moderate view, and 75,000 for those with superior views. At the time of the reevaluation, the applicant's view was considered superior and was assessed base site assessment of $75,000. Now, the applicant contends the view has become more blocked by growing vegetation. He's now has only a moderate view and should only be assessed the $40,000. Now, although considering softwoods grow one to one and a half feet per year, which could contribute, contribute to diminishing the applicant's view, without us actually visiting the property, the commissioners cannot adequately assess the view. But regardless, an error of 35,000 when compared to the total assessment of the property, of the applicant's property, in my opinion, does not meet the threshold for being manifestly wrong. And for this reason, I would not support granting the applicant an abatement. John, you have a comment?
I find that the assessment of Mr. Woodrow's property to, to, to not be manifestly wrong, I find that the town of Dedham used the same criteria on similar properties. The point of contention seems to be a question of aesthetics and what's considered a superior view. I saw no evidence that the land evaluation was unfair or biased. And I agree with, I agree with you that the difference between the 40,000 and the 75,000 doesn't constitute a unfair evaluation.
Paul?
We have to presume that the, you know, by law, that the assessment is correct and have evidence to disprove that, disprove it or show that it's manifestly wrong. You know, we, we had testimonies, but not a lot, but no evidence to support that. We don't have a appraisal. We just have comparisons from, you know, neighboring lots and no evidence to, to really support that other than testimony. So I'm going to move that based on the evidence provided to deny the abatement request of Adam Woodrow for the property located at 448 Bald Mountain Road in Dedham, since it failed to prove that the assessment is manifestly wrong.
And I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing now, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Woodrow, you, you have the ability to appeal our decision here today to the spirit court. You can consult with that, okay? Very good, moving on with our agenda. Gentlemen, I'd like to direct your attention to the county administrator. Scott? You, you have floor.
Yep. Uh, what is? All right, yeah, I just thought this would be an opportunity to give you an update on so far with the BAC. We have a final meeting tomorrow night and I think I've expressed or had conversations with each one of you individually, unintentionally, but some of their concerns. And I think at this point, if you have any direction on what I might tell them tomorrow night, the Sogew Department told them, which is they were presented with a budget to take a look at, to basically do their, do their job as they see fit and return it back to the commission. And specifically the discussion, discussions that we all know about transfers, so.
Scott, we sent it 11-4-3 to them, the changes they've made, what is it now?
Well, I think it's like 11-3-9.
Yes.
It's not, not substantial, no.
Well, they still have to meet with the sheriff.
Yes.
That's just about it, and his other departments, right?
Yes.
And I don't expect there to be a substantial change in those. There wasn't any controversy between us. We agreed, the department had agreed with the commissioners on proposals we sent to them. So if they don't make any changes in that, it's still going to remain 11.4, something like that. Scott, you have suggested some options that we should consider at some point with regards to funds that we could transfer.
Yes.
So I think, and some savings elsewhere, you know, elsewhere.
Oh, yeah, so in all fairness, that is, that is something I have not presented to the chair or talked with as of yet, simply that way. And the reason for that is, is that the new development is about transfer opportunities.
So here's, here's my opinion, gentlemen, that if, with the options that Scott has been recommending, if we could get this down to somewhere around 5%, Scott, that would require how much money?
Lose like 450.
$450,000, which sounds like a lot of money, but he has some fairly attractive options for transfers that I don't see any reason to go back in perhaps and amend substantially anything that we have done on the first round, so.
No, but you know, we're, we've gone through this exercise, we're almost through the exercise. Now is the time where, excuse me.
Seize. Correct, Woodrow.
Yeah.
I'll get it, you got it?
So I, I think that, you know, now's the time to look at, you know, sort of, here's some of those ideas and. hear some of those ideas and and, you know, present them uh to the BAC, because I, you know, I think now's the time to do it.
Today?
Not today, but just.
I think I think there are two roads to get there. And again, Commissioner Clark is essentially my, what I was working on was to get it down. I think I got it. Let's say six point six, six point something. And was to essentially remove the positions requested, flat fund department seventeen, but it also included transfers.
Yeah.
And now we're also talking about transfers. So really from a financial point, what I can tell, what I can say to you is that what I see here is I think you're all on the same page, but there's two ways to get there. You either transfer to reduce the budget as it currently is, remove the items, less of a transfer, and when you come to the point later on to actually um but especially the two positions, when it comes to a point later on with those where those are ready to be proposed, you funnel in other monies and add that to the budget. So you're not increasing the assessment, you're doing the same thing, it's just now or later.
Well, I don't think any decision on that, whether it's the amount of transfers or whether we're going to reduce something for today. Reducing that budget should have been done before we sent it to them, so. But if we can tell them that our goal is to get this down to somewhere between five and six percent increase, that gives them some sense of whether or not they want to go back into it and reduce expenditures or whether they can accept between five and six.
No, well, my feeling is that I'd like to see administrator outline some of that to the to the BAC. You know, some of these savings he's talking about, what he just outlined for us. And and here's why. If you know, i- if it's done there, then we can, I don't know, I I I see no downside to to having those proposals.
You're going to see the BAC say that this is our budget. Our budget sent to them was eleven point four three.
Yes.
Now for the county administrator who represents us to come in after that and start suggesting cuts that we should have made at his recommendation before we send it to them, they're going to say that's 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 that in the past, they have resisted that kind of change. Now, we want to make changes in reducing the budget. That's going to have to be done now after they send it back to us. I'm not going to, I I'm not prepared today to bless any any changes that Scott is suggesting without a full discussion, understanding all our options on transfers. And that is a discussion that we're going to have to have after the budget comes back to us from BAC.
And and John, and I I kind of agree with Bill, because anyway, we're going to I mean, we're like three quarters of the way through the budget right now. So some of the, even if we do some of the changes that Scott has proposed, uh if we go that route, we're still going to have to do a lot of those changes anyway. So I think just to let it go and cook through the course, Scott can uh discuss with them some of the pop, the transfer options there, kind of lay some of their fears that we're going to put forward and work for some increase, which isn't going to happen. And uh then it's going to come to the three of us here after they to figure out how we're going to get it down, whether it's to transfers or some.
John, I'm concerned that any suggestion that Scott makes to them, if they don't understand that purely as a suggestion, they're going to come back and say, you told us you were going to put three hundred thousand from C CBA, or you told us, you know what I mean? No, we're not telling you anything. Accept that. We're going, everything we can to get this between five and six percent increase. That's all we're telling you. We're going to do it for transfers, we're looking at budget again, at expenditures again. And because you heard them at the last meeting, what they're looking for is they want some sense of what we're going to do. Not what we're going to do, but what it's going to look like after we do it. Right, so in other words, they'll settle for an explanation, we're simply saying that we're going to, we're going to pare this down. Yes, just to see if five, now, I that's my opinion, five and six. Let's let's decide whether we're going to satisfy the five and six, because my sense is they'll accept five and six. It's pretty tough for them not to, because we have already cast the die that we gave a five percent increase. This year, it's going to be affect next year's budget and increases, so.
So, again, I'm new to this process, so. What uh? So given that, let's say it comes back to us and then we do some shaving. So now, the BAC has a budget. And then we have a budget.
No, they no longer have a budget. They have a proposal they've sent back to us. There's one budget, it's in our lap, having been having been given back to us in a certain and in a certain condition, whatever you call it. And that is what they're proposing us that we deal with now. If they send back, if they send back a budget, it's eleven percent, but they're sending it back to us on the condition that they know that we're going to pare that down to five or six. That's why they sent, they're not blessing eleven percent, right? They're they're going to bless a five or six percent increase with the understanding that once they send it back to us, we're going to pare it down, because quite honestly, Paul, this is the first time I recall we've ever done this backwards. These, not not with transfers, but when reducing the budget. We always traditionally would take, before we sent that to them, after we heard the whole department heads, we would go back here, take department by department and figure out what we wanted to shave before we sent it to them to get it down to a manageable percentage increase that we could support. And then we talked about uh transfers when it came back to us, if that still needed to be tweaked. So this is really a package from where we used to do this, but we're going to have, they're going to have to have a leap of faith when we tell them that we can pare this down to five or six. If that be the number that we want to give them. And that it's okay to send it back to us to eleven, because we understand you're not, you're not, you're not supporting eleven. You're not, you're not endorsing eleven. Sending it back with the idea that, you know, that we're going to cut that back to something that can be.
Also, what I saw in this process is them going through the budget, you know, basically line by line, department by department, and saying, okay, we're not seeing you know, things, individual things, and it's coming back to us for aggregate.
Well, and that's and that's the difference over previous years, because I've seen, I've seen years when they did go line by line by line and they then they slashed cuts in it. This last couple of years, they have basically, it's Fred Ireland back theory of it's the I haven't had the commissioners agree who we say they're different and sending that back to us. Now, if we want them to start going line by line and making dead cuts because we didn't meet some realistic increase, then
Well, no, I think it's a very, I think it's a working relationship, and I think it works well, from what I saw.
Yeah, if I could, that's what I really wanted to point out, because because it it is backwards, but it's actually a constructive, it's it's actually a forward, because as you pointed out, the two sides are not working together. I mean, I know what I heard of before I came here. I know what I I tried to do as I've been here and with a with a, really, it's been a complete team effort. But that's not what you're experiencing, because you pointed out, Chair, was the trust. They're going to trust that when when I deliver that message and when it comes back, that you're going to work at it and avoid the finger point, just just for a short version of it. So this is really, you're exactly right, Christian Perry. This is, it seems almost so easy, but what they've gotten useful over the last couple of three years is the fact that you are actually communicating with the department heads. You are actually, have got the department heads sinking in in unison. And so when you present a budget to them, it's already pretty rock solid. Because what they they could act, the only meat that's there that they could cut are things that if they did and they brought it back to you and you put it back in, that doesn't, like, it it that doesn't work well, and not in my book. So I think that's why I pointed out, you got a couple of auctions here. My my thought process is, uh you can either fund them now or fund them later, because you made you made um, I'll say promises, but you made you made agreements with department heads on certain things, right? Whether it be the sheriff's position or the deeds position, so.
Well, we share a common goal. It's not an agreement.
Perfect, perfect analogy. That's exactly right. We're on a common goal.
For me, for me personally, though, I didn't make anything, because bottom line was, it's after we heard from everybody, we saw what it was. We take a look at the whole thing again and decide whether or not we want to give them some assurance that, yes, we can. Because if we're going to cut those two positions, I think these department heads should have known that prior to going to the BAC, so that they had the option of asking the BAC to support it. Because that, you know, right now, we've got department heads who are willing to change their numbers to agree with us so that it looks good on the presentation, but if we start we start double crossing them later, you know what I mean? So.
I don't think we're double crossing at all. I think.
All three of you are saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, if we come back, if they come back now and you start cutting positions, then I say that that's that's uh that's a trust that we're starting losing. Because that should have been made before it went to the BAC, because now we've taken away the ability for them to promote this another entity, what they need, what they need and want, so.
But my guess is that once they hear that yeah, we're cutting a position, but here's our plan when we can fill that position. I think that we're building trust. We're not, we're not, yeah, can, but again, I'm new. So I, this is my first cycle, so.
No, you're exactly right. That's one of the, you you just both did the two. You you did, just the two auctions that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it's really just how you put it on paper. But I I really like the chair's auction. It's much less um convoluted. The less I say, the better.
Can we, I mean, you've you've seen some of the information, but can we give them the message that we're going to reduce somewhere between five and six?
Yeah. Yeah, so my feeling is that we can, we should communicate to them that that's our goal.
Yes.
And, you know, in all actuality, we may not get there, but that, but I think chances of us
I I I make that suggestion, Paul, because I think we can, yes.
Yeah, I do.
I I think, I think we have the ability, well, yeah, we have the ability to get there. It could involve cutting, but I'd like to see that we can do this, transport it's not cut, but uh if we're satisfied, then that should be the message, short and sweet, you know. Trust us, we to cut this down so there's only a five to six percent increase in the budget. And that's our goal. If and when they accept that and send this back to us, then we'll have that discussion in a later meeting as to how we're going to go with that.
Y'all three agree with that?
Yeah.
Thank you, because that's, that will, that makes all of our jobs much easier.
And then, so tomorrow, again, six o'clock here.
Yeah.
And probably will be the final one, but it.
I I would think so. After after this discussion, I think that pretty much will succeed, yeah.
Uh I'm 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 going to be way too, but I think I I think I'm I gotta lose some work here for at least today. I think I can take my laptop with me, zoom in, so.
I'm I'm.
I have Wi-Fi where I am.
This is Kelly Webpage, you can use that link if you need.
So anyways, yeah, so tomorrow night. And I got to tell you that uh, once they get through the sheriff's budget, these others are very quick. There's not a long discussion, it's a super process.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's not going to be a long meeting if there's not a lot of discussion with the sheriff's. Okay, anything further with regards to that?
Yeah, thank you.
Scott, anything else with regards to your office or whatever?
No, uh, Beck, you got anything? As far as the mandate, I still haven't heard anything. The latest discussion seems to be that they're not so sure that there will be, or whatever comes out might be significantly challenged in the courts, but again, just keep an eye on it.
You're talking about the.
Vaccine mandates, yeah.
Was was there ever an option for testing?
Well, as far as I know, that's one of the options that you can offer.
You can offer?
As far as I know, but we, that's a, we really don't know anything until the emergency temporary standards are released.
Okay, so once they're released, then discussion. How we're going to proceed on that, right? I saw a verified thing on television last night, and they verified that the home testing kits are nearly as accurate as the ones you said. Which is interesting. I thought it was a huge disparity, but they claim it is, it's within a few percentage points, which is insignificant. And whatnot, so anyways.
I'll host the adjournment.
Second, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.